We can start this workshop. Do you do a roll call for this?
Mayor. Mayor McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Amundson? Councilmember Amundson, okay. Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Okay, great. So, Andy, you want me to pass this over to you to open this up?
Actually, Mayor, could we stand for the pledge?
Uh, workshop, you want to do that, that way?
It's, we have it on the agenda.
Okay, let's do it.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Gladly.
Yeah, the purpose of tonight's workshop is, the town council, a couple of years ago, created a land use category out for the properties out along US 27. And when we created that land use category, what we did not include was permitted uses. The zoning that would be associated with that, what the council would like to allow to be out there, or what you would like to prohibit. So, what the council did was they had tasked the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board with reviewing a list of items that had been supplied by one of the property owners out there. And that board sat down and chewed through this with the help of Jeff Cadums to compile a list of what they thought might be appropriate. And I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Cadums in a moment to walk you all through that and give you some idea of what those items are. Then the council could deliberate on those items, whether there's anything else that you may or may not be interested in either adding to that list or taking away from that list. We do have one of the affected property owners that's out there who's here today, who may like to speak to this as well, to a certain extent, following Jeff's presentation. But that's kind of where we find ourselves now, Mayor. And if it's all right with you, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Cadums to go through a presentation for you.
All right, Jeff, you're on deck.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. First couple of seconds is going to be a repeat of some of what the town administrator just said. Then I'll get into a little bit more detail. Russell, can we go to the next slide? All right, in 2017, the town council decided to allow, to authorize business uses along US 27. This was done through an amendment to the comprehensive plan establishing a brand-new land use category specifically intended for and limited to US 27, with the intent, of course, of supplementing the town's tax base. Next slide, please. This is a good summary of what this new category is supposed to do. This comes right out of the comp plan and it says, "Establish a US Highway 27 business land use category exclusively for that corridor, allowing only carefully planned development that is designed to be compatible with adjacent rural residential land uses as substantially buffered by the existing cemetery and open space and which would be environmentally neutral." So, environmental neutrality particularly, or especially with the groundwater, given that it flows to the southeast, and compatibility in terms of noise, odors, emissions, et cetera, with the rural area to the east where the key criteria driving what uses would be permitted and what would not. Next slide, please. It then goes on to say that the US Highway 27 business category is intended to facilitate a limited range of clean, light industrial and business uses along the US 27 corridor that are not a threat to the potable water quality of the Biscayne Aquifer or to the peaceful enjoyment of residential properties to the east. Next slide, please. And then it goes on to list generalized permitted uses. And that's all comprehensive plans do. They don't get into specific uses. They'll say "commercial," but they won't say "flower shop" and, you know, "stationery store." That's for the zoning ordinance to do. So, the uses that the comprehensive plan allows are fabrication and assembly. Fabrication being, taking existing essentially finished parts and making something, making a product out of them. Sale and display of equipment, which includes agricultural equipment, construction equipment, utility trailers, boats, and similar uses. Light manufacturing and light industrial uses, and there's a little asterisk after that. And in some of the others, I'm going to read you because not all of these uses in these broad categories of light manufacturing and industrial are considered environmentally neutral and compatible. So, that is something that when we flush out the specific uses, the specific actual businesses that would be allowed here through the zoning ordinance, we have to consider those things. Next slide, please. It allows educational and scientific research businesses excluding medical or industrial labs, offices, lodging, retail, restaurants, personal services, and other ancillary commercial uses. Next slide, please. Commercial recreation, wholesaling, warehousing, storage, and distribution. So, next slide, please. So, many of these categories are very broad, leaving open to interpretation what specific business uses would fall into any one of these categories. And many of these categories are conditioned upon environmental neutrality and compatibility, therefore requiring a case-by-case determination. Next slide, please. So, just looking at this very basic hierarchy here. The zoning regulations, which have not yet been created for US 27, are basically, consist of permitted uses and development standards. The development standards will be building placement, building characteristics, height, et cetera, coverage, landscaping and parking, signage and similar things. And permitted uses would consist of uses permitted by right, which means anybody can come in, apply for a certificate of use, and get that certificate of use. Permitted uses that would be with conditions attached, which means, again, if you meet those specific conditions set out in the ordinance, you can do it. And then there's the case-by-case. And that would require a separate mechanism, and that's another ordinance. There's an ordinance on the council agenda for tonight to establish a special exception use procedure. That would be one such procedure that could be used to evaluate those uses that haven't been pre-cleared through the zoning ordinance and listed for council consideration to allow, not allow, or allow with any conditions council would see fit. Next slide, please. So, at the direction of the council, the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board developed a list of permitted and prohibited uses for the US 27 corridor. It's not exactly, I wouldn't call it a comprehensive list because it certainly doesn't cover everything. But this list was coordinated with the Bergeron Companies and because they have extensive holdings out there and wanted some clarity as to what it is they'd be able to do. What do some of these broad categories of use allow? And so, from that list, we, the comp plan board, determined which ones they felt were, number one, consistent with those use categories; number two, compatible or potentially compatible; and number three, environmentally neutral. Next slide, please. Or wait, I think you're on that slide.
Yep.
Okay. Most of the uses fall within these categories. You know, these are on the list that you've been provided from the comp plan board. And the uses generally are assembly, fabrication, display, sales, some instances of manufacturing, a wide range of commercial business uses, storage, packing, shipping, and repair. Next, please. So, the objective tonight would be, number one, identify any concerns or objections to the use list that the comp plan board is recommending be approved. And that, again, would be for another time as far as the mechanism, you know, whether we incorporate it into a zoning category or a developer agreement or whatever that mechanism is. And ultimately, yes, zoning regulations. And the second objective for tonight is to identify any concerns or objections the council may have with the text amendment to the comp plan that sort of came out of this list of uses. So, in going through this broad list of uses to determine what would be consistent with the comp plan for 27 and what wouldn't, five uses came about that the comp plan board felt were completely acceptable but were not listed in the comp plan under any general category. And so, there is a, allowing these uses, these five uses, would require a text amendment to the US 27 land use category. But it's not just that. There are some other reasons to consider amending the text of the US 27 category because, number one, when the US 27 category was created, the Broward County Land Use Plan, which controls over all local land use plans in Broward County to the extent of conflict, limited how much commercial use would be allowed in any industrial or quasi-industrial category. And every land use category the town creates, no matter what we call it, has to slot in under the, an umbrella category from Broward County. And so, the umbrella categories just didn't allow a significant amount of commercial. And it was never an issue as far as the town's discussions and the comp plan board discussions that they wanted to see a limit on commercial. It was just, again, something we inherited and we were sort of fenced in by the Broward County Land Use Plan. Additional, additionally, the text, even though it wasn't specifically intended to limit commerce uses to the east side of US 27, there are provisions in there that can definitely be read to not allow it on the west side. There is some privately held land on the west side. And in the future, the Water Management District certainly could release some of its lands and is the largest landowner on that west side. We know that future freight rail is proposed along that west side. And so, it makes sense not to limit it to just the east side. And so, that comp plan amendment would do all of those things. And there's a copy of that in your backup as well. And that precludes my presentation. Andy, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Where do, how do we want to lay this out?
Mayor, you're certainly welcome to open it to the public and the affected property owner if they would like to provide some feedback prior to council discussion.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Go ahead, Bob.
Ask Andy a couple of questions. Andy, when did advertisement for this go out to the public?
This is just a workshop tonight, so we would advert, when this, should it reach a forum where it comes before the council in an ordinance, at that point, it would be advertised?
I'm familiar with all that.
Yeah.
So, what I'm, I'll put the concern out on the table.
Right.
How many country estates residents do I see who live right on the property line here? I see one, two. We've got the list here. Was that put out on the website so people could consume the list and understand what is being discussed here? So, what worries me is, we've got a whole bunch of people that probably would be here if they had understanding. And based on what Jeff put up there, we're going to be going through the list and discussing. And I'd really love public input from the community on what, how they feel about the things that we'd be granting.
We advertise the agenda the same way we do, put it out publicly. Russell would have to ask that question and he stepped away. But the agenda would have been posted online at the end of last week or Monday of this week.
Yeah, I heard two days ago.
Would be normal.
So, I'm not clear. That's not really enough notice, in my mind, to go through this and make the decisions I think we need to make. If it's two days ago, because that's what I was told.
Listen, so we do another workshop. What's the big deal?
Well, I see that as a big deal. My time's valuable.
Okay.
As is theirs, so. Russell?
Does that accomplish what you want, though?
I want public input.
What?
So, I guess that would accomplish what I'd want, yeah. So, I think that's a reasonable compromise. But still, Russell?
Yes.
When did, when did the notification for the workshop go out, however you were advertising these days?
The requirements for a workshop are just mainly to post it in the lobby here at Town Hall. There's no requirement to advertise it in a newspaper or anything like that. There's no statutory requirement to do so.
Okay.
We are required to do it at least 24 hours in advance. And I believe we posted it either Monday or Tuesday, possibly.
Okay.
So, it met all of the legal requirements, for sure. 100%.
So, that's probably something we might want to take up at a future date. This is pretty important stuff. We've been working on it for years, right? I definitely would want some public input on this, other than when we go to the ordinance and all that sort of thing.
Okay. Now, listen, I get that. I understand that. But let me remind everybody, everybody said forever that all the commercial will be on US 27. So, let's keep that in mind also.
Yeah, but there's people that live up against the property.
No, there's not.
What, are you kidding?
Yeah, there's a funeral home that's 580-some-odd feet deep and it goes from Griffin Road to Sterling Road.
All right, Doug, calm down.
I'm not. I'm just making a statement.
But you're going to say that all the people that live on 210, nobody bucks up against this property that we're discussing out west? That's not true.
That is true. They bucked up to the cemetery.
Do you have a list?
Yeah, Martinez, it's the second-to-last property on the end, is right up against it. His backyard goes up against the property we're talking about, just as one.
That's one.
Other people live across the street. I don't want to get into a contest here.
Let's get some work done here.
Let's get some work done. I agree. Let's have a second workshop on this so there's more public involvement.
Non-issue with that, for me.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Public.
Noel Hollingsworth. I called 12 people out west. And there are a lot of people who are interested in this for various different reasons. And I called 12 of them. Eight of them are out of town. Three of them could not get off from work early enough without notice. One said they would be here and they're not here yet. So, I am here. I am the only one that may get up here and say certain things. You have no backup published with this whatsoever. We have no idea what you're talking about because you have the lists of what the permitted uses proposed are. We don't. All of the changes you have, we don't. You don't have it in the back for us to take a look at and speak competently about it. What you're doing is you're saying, "All of you people out here, we don't give a goddamn about you." That's exactly what you're saying.
That's not what I said.
Noel, that's not right at all.
That's not right at all.
Because you don't have any backup. You don't have any information.
How many comp plan board meetings?
Not one of us would say that to you, Noel. That's a lie.
But that's the impression we're getting.
Okay, do we do back and forth during workshops?
Not usually.
But this is an important thing and when things have been, you've been changing things, important, you've always put something in the back at the time of the meeting at least, where we could go forward with it, either a pocket with all of the slides and everything else in it and all that sort of good stuff. But no, nothing there tonight.
Let me, let me ask Russell something. Can I ask you a question, Russell?
Absolutely.
Was all this stuff tangible online for anyone to see?
The item that was placed online was simply the agenda itself for a workshop, which is exactly what we do for all of the other agendas. We don't prepare an agenda item for workshops like we do for regular town council agenda items.
Okay. Noel, you sat on the comp board for how many years?
14 years.
14 years.
And I have been, the year that I have not been on the board, I have been there every meeting.
Exactly. But you knew, you did. I'm not saying anybody else, but you did know what was coming. You knew.
I did not know this was coming this evening until Tuesday, when I looked at the agenda when it was published, Tuesday. And then I looked for backup and there wasn't any.
Mayor, Mayor, may I speak?
Go right ahead.
This is a workshop. Traditionally, we don't open for public comment in a workshop. It's meant to be a presentation from staff and a discussion among council. Anything that comes out of this that they, that the council would direct staff to go back and create an ordinance, create the legislation, would be properly advertised, would come back for two readings, would be subject to public input. So, the public would certainly have their opportunity to weigh in. This is really a preliminary discussion amongst the council is what this is meant to be.
And we also would have had this sooner had we had five council members. Go right ahead.
Being a new kid on the block, I understood a workshop to be exactly what was just said. So, I was surprised that anyone would be angry that the whole town...
It has traditionally been with this town that the workshops have taken public input and direction.
Okay. I can't argue that because I'm new.
And as you can see from the number of people that are here tonight, from out west, who will be directly affected by this, you didn't do a good job at all.
It's a workshop.
Absolutely.
My biggest beef with this whole thing is you should have noticed that it started at 6 o'clock. The average guy, the few average people that show up here on a regular basis, don't expect a 6 o'clock meeting. Expect a 7 o'clock meeting. So, everything's planned accordingly. I had to find out through somebody else tonight what time it started because I suspected it based on experience. But I'm the guy that's here most of the time. So, next time, just put 6:30 and I don't think I would be mad anymore. Thank you. Okay. Any additional public comment this time? No, okay. Back to us.
You may want to hear from the affected property owner?
Yes, gladly. If he wants to speak right now, I'll let him speak later. You want to speak now, Ronnie? I'll let you speak now and speak later if you like. It affects you 100%.
Well, Ron Bergeron, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all. And first of all, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody with good health and happiness and success and friendship and a lot of love. The Bergeron family is very honored to be in this town. And I do understand the lifestyle. I live it. You know, of course, I live out on US 27. My only neighbors are alligators. But our family has been intricately involved in preserving the culture, the heritage, the roots of Cowboy Town Davie. I'm sure you're very aware of that. And that's important. And it's important that Southwest Ranches, that I can say I'm very proud of, has really, really done a very good job in the aspects of keeping your lifestyle. And very few places like it, to be honest with you. Back when all this started in 2017, or maybe there was communications prior to that, I was asked if we had an interest in doing something on US 27 that would benefit Southwest Ranches and your taxpayers with economical growth and jobs, which are important too. Seeing that the frontage on US 27 from Sterling Road to Griffin, where it's a four-lane divide highway with 100,018 wheelers 24 hours a day, which is the main corridor, with a cemetery that runs, there is nobody that borders, no residents border this. I think it's 660 or 680 feet in width on the cemetery, a mile long, all the way, all the way through. And then east of that, obviously, you have a very sizable church that, to be honest with you, that, nothing against churches, of course, but create more traffic than what I think this whole project would create. And then behind that is your school. And then down on the Sterling End, you have an asphalt plant and you have the Bergeron Industrial Park. We border the landfill, 560 acres. And we border the C-11, which the truck stop. So, on the south end, we have a landfill. On the north end, we have a very active truck stop. And behind us, we have a cemetery and schools and asphalt plants and whatever. I think this is a great opportunity. Now, from the standpoint that it can create services, we all need them. We all need them. And all of the traffic, really, there's no impact to this community. Fortunately, Sterling Road, and I worked with that many years ago to make sure it dead-end and all the streets were cut off. I know there was some problems with 199th, which we concur that traffic shouldn't go through there.
198.
198, okay. But fortunately, a lot of good planning many years ago kind of shifts the traffic over to Sheridan or shifts it out to US 27. So, there's not many opportunities where you can create economical growth and jobs, a tax base, without impacting your community. Doesn't come around very often. And I think the forefathers seen that and it was your land use that was approved to allow reasonable uses. And I invite all of you to go by any of our projects. Go by our buildings. Look at what we do. And if you go into other parts to the east and compare them to the campus-type things that we do and the landscaping and the only, we do a campus-type setting. I'm sure you all have been by some of our projects. We live here, been here eight generations. And my reputation is more important than the businessman and the journey into that world. And we all have a lot in common. And I think that this is very positive. And I think you've got a lot of residents that would like to see revenue. You know, and I work to make the world different, just like you all. And I want to compliment all of you because I know I'm in that arena. I just left my board meeting. And I'm very honored to be involved in saving the Everglades, our drinking water, our quality of life, the fishing capital of the world, the boating capital of the world, two national parks, one of the natural wonders of the world. And the Everglades replenishes our aquifer. It's our drinking water. So, we're all kind of in the same avenue. It's not just all about me or all about you. It's all about we. So, I know there's some people, everyone will never be happy. Obviously, we can see that by watching Washington in the circus. And, but at the end of the day, we, the American dream is still alive and God bless America. And I'm going to tell you one thing, good government, you understand? Like me, I'm a developer. And someone says, "How can you be an environmentalist?" Well, our forefathers drew a line in 1949. And I was just a little boy. And when we had hurricanes, we had six-foot water in our house. And so, outside that area that was chosen to be saved, right or wrong, I've always been very passionate about all of our quality of lives. And I look forward to working with you. I didn't mean to get into such a conversation here. But you give me a mic, I can't help myself. But I just want you to know that, that we will certainly do a first-class job. And I want you to know that whatever buildings we build, there'll be a lot less noise coming to the east automatically. And we look forward to doing things that generate a lot of jobs and a lot of tax base for this town. And at the same time, I can't see any impact at all, actually. And I will tell you that we've been approached by a lot of churches and all. And I have nothing against churches, don't get me wrong. But there is a lot of... But there is a lot of traffic with that, and there is no tax base. I think you accommodate a lot of churches, and that's very good. God will bless us. But at the same time, I think this diversity will bring this town, and I would say 90% people do care about taxes. I know I do. And I would like to be a part of that, and our family's honored to be here. If there's any, we worked very closely with your advisory board. I was there personally. And I think we've come up with a lot of things in the zoning, because we're here for, we've already acknowledged in the land use amendment that that use there is compatible. It's already been acknowledged and approved. And all we're doing now, like Jeff said, is we're trying to get reasonable zonings. And there is a few things we would like for you all to consider. And maybe not necessarily approved, but don't make it prohibitive, so in the future, you may have a different thought. And Frank will go over that. There was another requirement on sewer and water to come 8, 10 miles and put sewer and water lines parallel to sewer and water lines, which truthfully, you can't do that because of the spacing in a right-of-way.
10 feet, isn't it?
Huh?
10 feet, I think.
Well, it's not economical anyway, but set that aside, you can't, you have to have certain distances between water lines and sewer lines. And the water lines and sewer lines are there, all the way out to Holiday Park. And I would like to be able to connect to what's there, not bring something 10 miles away. That can't be done in the right-of-ways anyway. You know, I'm an engineering construction contractor for 55 years. That's what I do for a living. So, we would like to, we'd like to be an asset. And I apologize for being so long-winded, but can't help myself.
All right, well, let him get up and tell us what you're looking for. Let him get up and tell us what you're looking for, Frank.
Thank you, Frank Sayo, Bergeron Family. I will be a little shorter than Mr. Bergeron. With regards to the list of uses that's provided by the Comprehensive Board, we would like to encourage the council to consider a few of these uses to be included in the list of permitted uses. And like Mr. Bergeron said, if it's something that the council is not 100% ready to include into permitted uses, potentially either add them as either a conditional use or special exception process that could be developed in the future, or at least leave it silent and not on your prohibited list of uses. Those are retail fuel sales, gas stations, service stations, so to speak, a truck stop, motor vehicle repair, which, even though some of the uses that are within the permitted list allows for things like vehicle sales, car dealers, boat dealers, and things like that, or even, for example, tractor supply type of a location, those businesses generally have an accessory use of doing some sort of motor vehicle repair, taking care of warranty items and whatnot. So I would encourage you to include motor vehicle repair or engine repair to the list of permitted uses. In addition to it all, the last item is motor vehicle or equipment wholesale or public auction facilities. There is an extraordinarily high demand for large users that, for the most part, will take 10, 20, 30 acres, and a vast majority of the property is used for simply outdoor storage, for the storage of these vehicles. So it's primarily a passive use, with the majority of the property being used for storage, and a very small portion of it's used for their office and the actual sales. And in addition to it all, the trend lately is that most of these wholesale or public auction type of facilities is all done online. So, and in addition to it all, most are done with solely just to dealers, state-licensed dealers. So you're not looking at a large amount of people coming to the location on a regular basis. You're not looking at the traditional auctioneer, like you would see at a livestock auction or so, that would create a lot of noise or nuisance. So that is it for the actual uses itself. Again, jumping on what Mr. Bergeron had said with regards to the water and sewer, we're in full 100% agreement that any development on this property, and I believe the county as well as the state building codes require domestic water and sewer when you're building a primary structure, we're in 100% agreement with that. Our only caveat to that is that we would ask that the Comprehensive Plan Language would remove the restriction of who we get that water and sewer from. If you didn't already know, there is actually water and sewer abutting the property along US 27 in the right-of-way, from a neighboring city. And bringing that water and sewer from the city of Sunrise, which would, closest location is Dykes and Griffin Road.
No, that sense is going to be closer, but...
Very, very expensive. Thank you very much.
Okay, back to us. Who would like to go first, as far as input here? Nobody wants to go first? All right.
I've got a question for Richard, concerning one of the things they were just talking about, and that'd be water and sewer.
Go ahead, in the mic, so they can hear you.
I apologize.
Still can't hear you. Sorry.
Turn up the microphone.
There you go, crank them up a little higher.
We're in the middle of a lawsuit, we're enjoined in a lawsuit against Pembroke Pines over that specific issue. If we made any changes to our comp plan to accommodate, would that have any implications on the other activities we have going on right now, concerning water and sewer?
I mean, we would definitely have to look at it, I mean, that's something that Keith and I can look at later and get back to you on. It's not something we're going to comment on right now without looking at the whole...
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we've got time, because this is just a workshop. But, good, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, so, one of my questions is, I see that the Comp Plan Board had taken out gas stations and truck stops. With the regulations through the state, and I don't know if the feds also, has such stringent regulations on how they have to deal with it. I don't know why we're that concerned any longer with those items, so... I don't know if you, the board, would like to find out through the EPA or whoever does those regulations, what they are, before we make any call on it. But I personally think with everything that's already in play, and that the state and federal feds do, that I don't know why we wouldn't allow a gas stations and truck stop. Do you want to jump in here?
Well, I guess I can divulge this now. I actually had the opportunity, I went with Andy. Was it Wednesday we went to meet with Mr. Bergeron? And I know he's a great advocate, and he supports the Everglades, and he's going to fight till there's no fight left in him to save it and make sure that it stays safe for all of us. But he was explaining to us about the penalties and the insurance and the bonds and everything that goes into this. So to take and put something out there, and then just let it, you know, run whatever way you want, you know, he's going to end up losing his shirt. He's not going to do that. They abide by the rules. Is there always a chance there could be an accident? Sort of kind of, maybe, if, yeah, there could be. There can be an accident in anything. I mean, we have stuff here in our town right now, where if they had an accident, you know, propane or whatever, you know, it happens. Davie is right next door. I mean, to me, right next door, and they sell propane tanks. I know what happens when propane blows. I lived just a mile away from the Midas when it blew, and my window shattered and everything. So, accidents can happen, but you cannot live your life on "what-if." There is no "what-ifs" in life. It doesn't exist. So I really don't think by putting something out there, you're jeopardizing us. When this first all came about, and I can remember talking to a gentleman that is here tonight, and he said, "The only place that's acceptable for any of this stuff to go in is on 27. That's it. I'm not discussing anything else, that's the only place." This is 27. This is now. This is going to help the town. There's pros and cons, and I see a lot of your points. I see that maybe there should be another workshop and get more input from the residents, absolutely. But I think at the end of the day, if it's explained right, and they can hear it, and they know everybody's concerns, I think it's going to be a good thing. I don't know if you guys went through it again, but I did, I went through my list again. And just off the top of my head, we've got on here, animal burial grounds. We can't have animal burial grounds. What is everybody's backyard? Hello? It's animal burial grounds. I mean, I don't know too many of you that pay, you know, $300, $400, $500 to say, "Hey, come take this gal away." That don't happen here.
More than that.
Or chickens, or goats, or whatever, right. There was a couple of things on here, that if you have them, like asphalt. There was something else, it kind of stinks, so if the wind is blowing the right way, you're going to smell it. I understood that. Concrete batching. You know, this list goes on and on and on and on. The pest control services. I want to know how many people do not use pest control, of any kind. No insecticides, no nothing. Look at the stuff we dump in our pools. And then we do something really dumb. We take the biggest organ in our body, which is our skin, and we get in it. If you sneeze, bless you. So, I would ask everybody to get a copy of the list again, which I know certain people have it already. Go back through it, look at it, and say, "Really? It's out on 27." Another thing is, there's certain things in life that you cannot stop. There's a train coming. It is coming. I'm telling you it's coming, it may not be in my lifetime, but it is a coming. And will that bring us revenue? Will that bring us grief, or havoc, or whatever? Who knows? The town needs to get some substantial revenue. We've got monies we're losing in the town. I would love to see a show of hands at this workshop, next shop, on how many people want their taxes raised.
I believe we just lowered them.
Okay, we did. We did, which was a really good thing. But how many people would want their taxes raised, their mileage rate going up? Hey, if we can keep it right where we're at, or lower it, we're doing good. But that requires income. It's strictly business. You cannot live back in the 1800s, it doesn't exist anymore. Do we need to maintain our rural lifestyle and keep it as simple as possible? We do need to keep it simple. So go ahead and go look in Andy's office at the rules of the town. I have one of the original books, it's probably 15 pages. He's got volumes now, volumes of rules. So is this what you really want for your town, all these rules and regulations? I don't think so. Gary?
Yeah, I'll try them in here. I'm pretty comfortable with what the Comp Board has come up with. They've debated this ad nauseam, I've been at most of the meetings, so I've heard the pros and cons going around. And I think the public, by another workshop meeting down the road, this should be, this list should be published either on the website or for distribution, and take a look at it and see what input they have. Can't hurt, at this point. But I'm comfortable with this list of permitted and non-permitted uses.
I'm good with the list, I just think we should open it up a little bit more under the circumstances, but, go ahead. Anyone else?
When you say "open it up under the circumstances," are you meaning going from...
I mean, like allowing gas stations, truck stops, that kind of thing.
Oh, I thought you were talking about...
A boat repair thing, you know, automobile repair, whatever. I mean, what if you put a car dealership out there?
No, I agree with Gary. I'm not opposed to bringing the proper revenue to the town and keeping taxes as low as we can, obviously, without hindering the way we live. But then again, the train's not going to come through my backyard. 27 isn't going to reroute and go through the middle of the town. So I think keeping these things in mind, in perspective, having it well-done. Mr. Bergeron, I know, was just named by the governor to a very important board, and he's going to keep our water good. So I think we're good.
Our number one concern is our water, and I think we're all on the same page with that, so...
Yeah, we're good. I like my well.
I like mine, too.
So, I was on the Comp Plan Board for roughly three years that we debated what should be put around town. And I agree, 27 is the best place to locate businesses in town, because, you know, more than likely, we're not going to absorb any traffic from it, it'll be serviced from 27 itself. So, you know, I don't see that as an issue. Now, a truck stop, on the other hand, that's going to pull them off of 75. So I do see a traffic impact there. But just to get back to the Comp Plan Board, this list of the 79 here has actually grown. The list was even shorter once upon a time. We were trying to prevent, really, any light industry, anything that would impact the air, the water, the noise, and really make it unpleasant for anybody who might live over the fence. And I think this year's discussions were probably very fruitful, and actually added a lot to the list. Because the thinking was, just as one example, you know, we were saying, "Oh, no refrigeration, no ice making, none of that." And, you know, things have changed. This isn't Royal Palm Ice, that used to make it on a lot, and you could hear it four, you know, four blocks away, because the equipment was so noisy. And we were talking to Frank, and Frank said, "It's not done that way. Everything is, you know, soundproofed, everything is behind walls, and walls, and walls, and in the building and all that." So, a number of things were added. But the premise that the Comp Plan Board has had since we began discussing commercial around town is, we want to protect our water, we want to protect our air, and we need to keep the noise down. So, you know, this list has been vetted over and over and over again, and I actually had a couple of things added to it, which I was willing to accept, because I didn't want to be too stringent either. You know, fuel, the best-laid plans. I think Robert Sirota had looked up, and I think he's here, he was here earlier, he looked up how many leaking fuel tanks are currently in Broward County unmitigated. It was over 17,000, which, he found that right on the web, we were looking at it at the meeting that night. So, we have the control on whether we want to take the risk or not. And something like a fuel spill, or an 18-wheeler coming in that had a fender bender up the road, and didn't wait for the cops and came in with a leaking 75-gallon fuel tank, and it runs right up to a truck stop out there, and runs, and runs off all night. You know, I'm sure that they wouldn't want that, but things like that happen. I worked for America's largest trucking company, and I heard all kinds of stories about what happens with the trucks. So the list the way it is, the, the specifically prohibited, these can be changed. You know, we're, we're not carving this in stone. So perhaps an administration in the, excuse me, a council in the future would want animal burial grounds or would want a truck stop out there. They think it's the right idea, but I don't think it's the right idea for us.
Well, you just talked about fuel running off. Do you all know how many legal commercial vehicles are parked on properties here in Southwest Ranches? None, yeah, none. None, right, Robert? They leak. They change their oil. They drain. That's all controlled by the EPA. They're out there every day inspecting them and making sure it's all cleaned up and not going into the ground, correct? You know better than that. It's going into our ground. So by putting stuff out there, like storages and stuff like that where these vehicles can go, we are protecting our ground and our water and our wells. And I can tell you, the, the amount of stuff that goes into the ground. I took one night, and I am guilty of this. And I had cooked off a bunch of bacon. And everybody loves bacon. Took the bacon, took the grease, because I have septic tank and well. And I walked over to the sink and I had a hand grab me. He says, if you dump that down that drain, I'm going to make you crawl through those pipes and clean them out and get it. So I thought, oh, okay, no big deal. I'll, 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 I'll get rid of it. I have a gravel driveway. And I took and went outside and dumped the grease, just a little bit, but I dumped the grease outside. He says, now, where do you think that grease went?
Right in the house.
Yeah. I got yelled at again. So I said, well, what am I supposed to do with it? He said, well, you got paper towel, you can sop it up and you can put it in the trash. And I said, then it goes to our dumps, the bags deteriorate and the grease is there again. He said, well, I got a can out in the garage for when I have to drain the, the oil in the car and stuff. He said, that's where all the grease should go. He says, you'd be helping everybody, including me, because I won't have to smell the grease anymore. I'd be smelling bacon all night. So I, I know we're all guilty of putting chemicals into our ground. You, you have your lawn sprayed, you do all kinds of stuff. I don't think this is such a big deal. I see you laughing back there. My did get me for that one. But there's so many vehicles that are parked on properties. I took and took a ride with Mr. Bergeron. And before we got to him, Andy and I went around. And we're looking at property that bordered, was that Sheridan? Sheridan. And there's not a good hedge on some of these properties. You should see the trucks and the equipment that's sitting there. And from years of being married to a construction man, I know these machines leak all the time. That's all going into your, your, your property. And, and the amount of vehicles down there was incredible. And I'm like.
All right, Gary, don't mean to shut you off, but our seven o'clock is here. So what I'd like to do, if we could, is to basically say we're going to accept what was submitted to us and the next workshop, continue to discuss what we may.
Accept this?
Yeah.
I second it.
Well, did you make a motion?
I didn't make a, I can't make a motion. I can second it.
All right, so I make a motion at it. Wait a minute.
This is a workshop and we typically, that workshops don't give any kind of final direction. We can say, what, what we can do is suggest that we have another workshop and go ahead and set that up, maybe?
I'll make a motion that we have a second workshop to cover this.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Russell.
And two hours, it's fine.
Yeah, good point. I, I realize we have a certain way to do things with, with workshops.
We'll certainly include this in backup.
You know, less comprehensive communications. This is a big thing. I mean, this is a big thing for me. This is a big thing for the, the people that, I think it's a big thing for the town, but because I also agree, we want revenue as well. And I want people here to hear the pros and cons.
Hang on, man.
So if we're going to be discussing this, I'd like you to treat that workshop like you would a council meeting and get it out in all forms and even maybe send it out via the town's email system so that as many people across town hear about it, not just, you know, in my district.
So is it a council meeting or another workshop?
No, no, I'm saying treat the workshop like a council meeting in terms of communications. That's all. Post it on the website like you would normally.
Would you like to suggest a date for this workshop?
Well, hold on, let, let, let me jump in here. Why don't we make, just make it a meeting and make it two hours? So if we want to vote on something, we can.
That works.
So it'll be a workshop, but a workshop meeting, so we can actually take action.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Mayor, mayor, procedurally, we can't take action at a workshop like that final action.
I know that. That's what I'm saying, make it a meeting.
So, right, so then we would have to have just basically a special meeting specifically for this topic. Is that what you're saying? Separate and apart from a regular meeting?
Yes.
So we'll have to prepare a regular agenda item and we'll do that. That's fine.
Good.
Okay.
I'd recommend you look for a date in, in January, Russell.
He didn't hear you, in the mic.
I'm sorry.
If there's any thoughts.
If there's any time in January, aside from the January night meeting.
We, we have a January, we, we typically only have one meeting in January. This, this January, we're actually planning on having two meetings. So we can schedule it for prior to that first January meeting, if you like, which is January 9th. Or we could do it at the meeting on January 23rd.
23rd would be better because the night's going to be iffy for me even being here.
I agree. Gives us more time to prepare and also get the word out as well. So January 23rd, we can do that for sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's do that. And you're going to keep the rest of the agenda relatively light that night?
So we're not here until 2 o'clock in the morning? We'll do our best.
That's set by the town administrator. I'll, I'll work with him on that.
Well, we were normally only going to have one. Now we're having two meetings. So we can schedule everything else for the first one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're, we're on, we're on the same page. We're all good, right?
I think so.
Okay. All right, so this meeting is adjourned. What, do you want a five-minute break or anything before we start our next one?
I could use a pit stop.
All right, so we'll get in five minutes, we'll start the next meeting.